Good evening, everyone. Hope you're having a great day. I will now call our April 2nd Mayor and City Council Work Session to Order at 6:00 P. M. To start off with our agenda, our first item is a bid recommendation from the Department of Public Works requesting approval to award the contract for Cypress Street and Saratoga Improvement Project L. A. Twenty-five dash zero zero seven. Acting Director Tommy Helms with Public Works, you now have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Sidnor, Council President Clark, and Laurel City Council members. The Department of Public Works is requesting approval to award the contract for Cypress Street and Saratoga Avenue Improvement Project L. A. Twenty-five double oh seven. The scope includes resurfing the existing pavement, replacing sections of curb and gutter, sidewalk, ADA-compliant ramps, and installing thermoplastic roadway markings on Cypress Street from West Smith Drive to Oxford Drive, and the entire length of Saratoga Avenue from Concord Avenue to Colony Avenue. The Department of Public Works has solicited public bids for this project, resulting in nine submissions. A bid opening was conducted on March 4th, 2025, in the council chambers. The submitted bids ranked from lowest to highest are as follows. Calvert Ready Mix and Concrete Supplies LLC, ninety thousand, two hundred fifty-eight dollars and forty cents. VMP Construction Co., Inc., one hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. Stanley Concrete LLC, one hundred three thousand, nine hundred forty-nine dollars and twenty cents. E. N. R. Services, Inc., hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and forty cents. Espina Paving, Inc., one hundred twelve thousand, five hundred eighty-two dollars. Image Asphalt Maintenance, Inc., one hundred twenty-five thousand, eight hundred sixty-three dollars. S. F. M. S. LLC, one hundred twenty-six thousand, four hundred fifty-one dollars and seventy-one cents. Ross Contracting, Inc., one hundred thirty-five thousand, four hundred forty-eight dollars. Francis O'Day Co., Inc., one hundred fifty-eight thousand, two hundred seventy-two dollars. Funding for this project is available through the F. Y. Twenty-five Adopted Capital Improvement Program, Cypress Street and Saratoga Avenue Improvements. It is recommended that Calvert Ready Mix and Concrete Supplies LLC from Lusby, Maryland undertake the Cypress Street and Saratoga Avenue project in the amount of ninety thousand, two hundred fifty-eight dollars and forty cents. In addition, D. P. W. is requesting a contingency amount of nine thousand, seven hundred forty-one dollars and sixty cents to account for any unforeseen construction issues that may arise during the project for a total of a hundred thousand dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helms. Do we have any questions or comments from the council? I don't see. Oh, uh, Councilmember Simmons.
Go ahead. I think Councilwoman Johnson may have a question.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Councilwoman Johnson?
I think we both came in about the same time, so just a quick question. Have we ever done work with Calvert Ready Mix before?
Yes, we have. So they, hey, they have done the, the curb and gutter at City Hall and all the, the improvements that you see up there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Simmons, do you also have a question?
Yes, it's sort of a follow-on, and thanks for your reply from D. P. W. from the query. But mostly just thinking ahead, as I know we're seeing federal, state, county sort of belt tightening going on from my own education for D. P. W., is that like looks out over the next six, twelve, eighteen, twenty-four months? What sort of rules of thumb does that use in prioritizing like which projects to tackle next, or which ones to do in front of other ones? I know some of that's going to be maybe condition of streets, but you know, things like the bridges, the lights. Is there other factors that get used in, or is that pretty much the main ordering sequence, if you will, of what project to tackle next from the C. I. P.?
It's mainly about when we do pavement evaluations, when we do our concrete repair list, that's when we really go out and find all of the, the bad areas in the city. Like Carriage Hill is next, that we do have issues with, with, uh, trees pushing up a sidewalk and the, the roadway is just aging. So that's how we do that.
So sort of the next worst condition one is sort of like gets knocked off next on the list? Yeah.
And all, all Public Works employees that, you know, they come to us and they're saying, hey, this is bad. There's getting potholes here. So we make notes of it.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any additional questions or comments from the council on this particular bid recommendation? Okay, seeing none. Uh, and if no one, uh, has any comments about it, we're going to place this on the April 14th Virtual Mayor and City Council Regular Meeting. Now, moving to Agenda Item Number Three is a bid recommendation for a generator replacement project Phase One Design for the Department of Emergency Management. Director Christina Cornwell, you now have the floor.
Thank you, and good evening, Madam President, Mayor, and Councilmembers. Before you, it was a memo dated March 14th recommending approval of a hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars in funding to begin Phase One of the generator replacement project. The critical facilities slated for the generator replacement include the Municipal Center, the Police Department, Public Works Complex, Park and Recreation Maintenance Facility, and the Armory. Phase One will involve conducting surveys to determine the appropriate specs for each generator, design development, and securing any necessary permits for installation. The city has an existing agreement with the Maryland Environmental Services, which they bring subject matter expertise to support mitigation projects such as this one. Their team will develop a detailed engineering and electrical, electrical design to facilitate Phase One. Funding for this project has been allocated under Federal Fiscal Year Twenty-five C. I. P. And I respectfully requested the council approve to proceed with Phase One in collaboration with the Maryland Environmental Services. Thank you, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Cornwell. Are there any questions or comments from the council? I see Councilmember Mills. Oh, yeah.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Madam President, I do have a question. I actually have, uh, three questions for, uh, Director Cornwell. Um, there is, um, I was just wondering, um, how is this in the budget when it's, um, when it's a quote? Says, uh, quoted?
So it's in the capital improvement plan budget. So, um, last year, um, I came before everyone to present, uh, the sub-award. So it was a grant. So as we did, um, our planning for the fiscal year twenty-five, uh, we put in there, uh, anticipation of improve, approval of a grant. So it was a federal grant that was awarded to us, and it was in two phases.
Okay, and, and so, um, was there, I'm just wondering like why there wasn't like any other prices? Um, you know, uh, like price comps, uh, you know? Director, uh, um, Helms had for, uh, you know, for this, uh, capital improvement project has several different price comps, and you know, I just would like to compare other prices.
Sure.
You know, with other companies.
So the reason, um, that this one is a little different than, um, what Tommy presented is that we have an intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement with, um, the Maryland, uh, Environmental Services, and that's back from November of 2023. So, uh, we were able to piggyback off of that from the state. And they are able to provide us with mitigation support towards projects such as this one.
Okay, okay. So that's similar to, um, with, with the chief was piggybacking off of a, a, um, a, a contract. So it's something similar like that, the items. I got you. Okay. All right. Well, that's good to know. That's good to know. And, um, my last question is, uh, you have, you had a list of different buildings. I was just wondering why the, uh, DePietro Community Center wasn't on that list?
Sure. Um, so, um, I know that, uh, Director Bailey is on here, but, um, from what I understand, that building was built in nineteen ninety-two, so it wasn't, uh, time to replace that, uh, generator.
Okay, I thought you might have been just doing a, just a whole sweep, you know? So that's not.
Like, we just got a generator for the multi-service center, but that was put into place, um, during the construction, so that wouldn't be time to replace that.
Okay, okay.
Sure.
All right. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Councilmember Mills, Councilmember Simmons, please proceed.
Yeah, just one thing I think to clarify for folks tracking with us as well, as we talked, I think, towards the end of last year with this grant. Because the federal monies are there, the, the, that grant is covering ninety percent of it, although this is for a hundred and fifty-two thousand. The city out of pocket comes to roughly fifteen thousand, or correct me if I'm wrong, Director Cornwell. But I think the city's out of pocket comes to fifteen thousand, which obviously is a big help for the feds picking up ninety, ninety percent.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments from the council? I don't see any. Thank you, Director Cornwell. This is really, um, helpful, and I think it's definitely comforting for residents to know that we have a plan in place just in case the weather starts getting even crazier. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Moving to Agenda Item Number Four, we have a Resolution Number Four dash two zero two five. Um, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland to set the date, time, and polling location for early voting in the city of Laurel for the general election of November twenty twenty-five. Um, and we have Madam Clerk Sarah Green, you now have the floor. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, so the resolution is to set the, uh, date, time, and locations for early voting for the, uh, November twenty twenty-five general election for the city. Uh, so we are proposing that the, um, we'll have early voting at two, both locations, the Joseph R. Robinson Laurel Municipal Center and the Robert J. DePietro Community Center on November first, twenty twenty-five. Um, and that will be from nine A. M. to five P. M. at both locations.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any questions from the council? Scanning, I don't see any. All right, perfect. Um, for actually this one, and I, I failed to mention for the last one, if there are no comments or, um, if anyone doesn't have any additional questions or comments, then we will now place this, um, for our first public hearing and the introduction for our April fourteenth meeting. All right. We are moving. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're moving to Agenda Item Number Five, Resolution Number Five dash two zero two five. Sorry, just getting at the information. This is a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland. Pay tribute to Emancipation Day, and I'll actually be, be providing background information about that. Um, and just to give a little bit of background about Emancipation Day, in case you weren't aware, um, in Maryland, it commemorates November first, eighteen sixty-four, when the new state constitution took effect, abolishing slavery in Maryland. So this date is particularly significant because Maryland ended slavery nearly a year before the Thirteenth Amendment abolished it nationwide in December eighteen sixty-five. Um, so Maryland's path to emancipation was a little unique and complex. As a border state during the Civil War, Maryland remained in the Union but still permitted slavery. The Emancipation Proclamation issued by President Lincoln in eighteen sixty-three did not apply to Maryland because it only covered states in rebellion. Instead, Maryland achieved emancipation through its own constitutional process after a heated, uh, debate and political struggle, and voters narrowly approved a new state constitution that abolished slavery. So when it took effect on November first, eighteen sixty-four, approximately eighty-seven thousand enslaved people in Maryland were legally free. In some Maryland communities, especially in areas with strong African-American heritage like our own in the city of Laurel, November first is celebrated with educational programs, some community gatherings, and ceremonies honoring this crucial moment in the state's history of the former enslaved Marylanders. Now, Emancipation Day is celebrated normally the first Saturday in November in most locations. But here in Laurel, we have a longstanding tradition where it is celebrated the first Saturday in September in Laurel at St. Mark's United Methodist Church. Laurel's Emancipation Day celebration has also been in existence for more than a hundred years. Now, why should we recognize it locally? So there are a few reasons. This local recognition shows that our city values this history as its own identity and heritage, not just as a state observance. It also provides Laurel the opportunity to highlight our city's unique historical connection to emancipation and the contributions of formerly enslaved people connected directly to Laurel. Lastly, it sends a powerful message about our values towards equality, freedom, promoting inclusive civic identity, and increasing community bonds while acknowledging some difficult historical truths. So I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has any. No questions? No comments?
I do, Madam President.
Okay, please proceed.
So, um, so like when you mentioned the, um, the celebration for, um, at St. Mark's, um, church, is, uh, is it going to be two celebrations, or this is just a, um, a resolution for, you know, setting this in, into law? But this is not something that's taken away from them, is it?
No, sir. Um, so this is just us as a city acknowledging Emancipation Day locally. So the state has, but individually, we have, we're kind of unique. St. Mark's is a very large celebration within our city, right? And it's great generally to, to also recognize it locally. Um, a lot of, a lot of cities have done this locally where there may be something acknowledged statewide, but it shows an extra emphasis that it's really important to us and that we cherish our residents and acknowledge it locally. So no, it's not, it's not a resolution to create a new celebration. We're just coming together just to add a little bit of emphasis on it and make it uh, right in our, our records locally.
Okay. All right. I mean, I don't mean, I don't, I don't knock, uh, partying two times now. I'm, I'm fine with that. No.
Remember that now. We're gonna have you hold a party.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. Councilwoman Johnson?
So thank you. Yeah, no questions. Just wanted to, um, thank you for sharing the information. I don't know if the mayor's rubbing off on you, or you're just sharing your history, but it's good to know the history of Laurel and how we are, um, unique in what we do. Um, and I didn't say a question, but I do have a question. So, um, the resolution is not stating any dates, but is just paying tribute and acknowledging the fact about Emancipation Day and how we recognize it.
Yes, it's not. Um, I feel like when I, when I did the research, so I looked back into a lot of our historical references, right, including our buildings, the names. But St. Mark's is very prominent in our city, in the city of Laurel and in our community. I think you, like you said, the mayor is rubbing off. I, as I was reading the history, I said, he is starting to rub off on me where I am sitting here telling the entire history, but I knew if I didn't, he would. Um, but yes, it's, it's just to acknowledge it locally. Um, but it also gives back the strength to our community members to then create gatherings that they see as appropriate to support this effort, but it's letting them know that we care, we acknowledge it, we see it, and we're here with you.
Cool. Thank you. No, really appreciate it.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments from the council? Councilmember Simmons, please proceed.
Yes, thank you for, for introducing and for also the sort of background that it is. Like I, uh, in some ways, although certainly it's a stain on our history as a country and as a state, it's also a point of pride of, of what the unique history that we have and how we've evolved and struggled and come through that. So I think this is a great remembrance for the city to have and, uh, to sort of keep in the forefront, especially, uh, the uniqueness that Laurel brings to that history. So thank you for presenting.
Thank you. I can't leave you out, Mayor Sidnor. I know you have something that you want to share. Would you like to say?
Great, a great job, um, great job. Support this resolution hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. If there are no additional questions or comments from the council, um, we will place this on the agenda for introduction and first public hearing for our April fourteenth Virtual Mayor and City Council Regular Meeting at six P. M. All right. So moving to Agenda Item Number Six, we have a Charter Resolution to amend the Charter of the City of Laurel, Maryland by amending Article three hundred Government and specifically amending Section three twenty Clerk to the City Council Deputy Clerk. Mayor Sidnor, you now have the floor.
I thank you, Madam President, and good evening, everyone. I wanted to say happy early birthday to the city of Laurel. Our birthday will be, uh, April the fourth, so get a chance to say it publicly right here on this work session. So we'll be a hundred and fifty-five years old, so let's go celebrate a hundred fifty-five years of, uh, birthday on April fourth. Um, Madam President, thank you for the opportunity to present this, uh, this Charter Amendment, uh, one eighty-two. As you stated, uh, stated, we want to change that, uh, appointment of the clerk of the, um, council, be appointed by the mayor, confirmed by the council, and serve under the direction of the city administrator. Um, also, yeah, so this is what we want to do, Madam President. We want to, uh, change that Charter Amendment to, to that effect. Uh, clerk of the council will be appointed by the mayor, serve at the pleasure of the mayor, and confirmed by the city council, and reported to the city administrator. If you have any questions, I stand by. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor. Are there questions or comments from the council? Councilmember Simmons, please proceed.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam President. Um, and I did have a chance to meet with the mayor and with the city administrator, and I thanked them both for their, for their time and openness to, to chat. Uh, I do want to share off the bat that I, I mean, I have some grave concerns about the proposed amendment, but, um, just to sort of jump into a couple of questions. When I think about our sort of our American system of self-government's, you know, an experiment we've been at for about two hundred fifty years, um, one of the critical elements that comes to mind is the, the separation and the balance of powers, and that's the recognition that the powers of government shouldn't be concentrated in any one person uh, or any one office, but it should be divided so there can be a healthy check and balance between those. So, um, there's a saying, I think, from a, somebody called Acton who said, you know, power corrupts and absolute power corrupts absolutely. Um, so when I look at this proposed amendment, because since it removes the understanding that the clerk is the clerk to the council and also sort of strips the council from the ability to remove its own clerk, I sort of have to, to ask sort of where are we preserving the balance of power within our city's governing document?
And thank you for the question, Councilmember Simmons. Uh, we talked about that, uh, you and I talked about it several times, um, in our office. Uh, I think it's just aligning us with the, uh, rest of the department, the clerk form as a department head at the same department, um, the authority of the other department heads. We just want to align that. Um, the clerk would still be responsible for the council, but, uh, as a supervision, because the council's part-time staff and the clerk is full-time, and the city administrator is here every day to supervise the clerk, time off, legal approval, things of nature. So we feel that, um, that, that clerk would serve under the mayor's discretion and confirmed by the council. Um, that's what we stand by, Councilmember Simmons. Uh, the, um, council, of course, the council has a right to, uh, move forward this or not move forward it, but that's the position that I take as the mayor, um, with the city administrator as well.
Sure. You know, and sort of following up on that too, like stepping back from, in my mind, sort of considering this proposal in its broader context, you know, as a, as a city, we've got a forty-four million dollar budget and two hundred somewhat employees or so. Um, you know, would you say it's the position of your administration that the entire legislative branch of our government comprised of the five members of council um, should not have one person that's exclusive to their function and accountable to their members?
Once again, Councilmember Simmons, I, I understand your point. Um, my answer is still the same. Uh, I think that, uh, once again, the clerk of the, serves as apartment head, the same authority as other department heads, and he'd be working directly with the council. It's just the supervision of that employee will be supervised by the city administrator. Um, but once again, you have the authority to move forward this legislation or present a new legislation as well.
Yeah. I mean, just by illustration again, and those are, these are things we've chatted about, but just to, to share more broadly. Whenever we look at a charter amendment, you know, I try to think in decades, half centuries, and centuries, because we're sort of tinkering with our city's governing document. And, and I know this is not certainly the case now, but I do envision a point or possibility down the road, let's say fifty years from now, where if there's a disagreement that might be between, uh, the executive branch and the legislative branch, that the, the clerk to the council could be used to sort of stymie the function of council, be seeing that that person would be answerable only to the mayor and not to the council. So that's part of my concern, and I know we have a different perspective on that, but, um, you know, just to to share sort of a little bit of some of my thinking, if it's helpful.
It's very helpful. Like I said before, sir, you have the decision, um, with legislation, how to move forward it, uh. Like I said, we use references from other municipalities as well, but we don't have to follow municipalities. That's, once again, it's a decision that we can make together, or you guys can write two new legislation as well.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. Yeah, so, um, just to sort of close out for, uh, as, as mentioned at the beginning, I sort of have concerns, as some of them I've shared. Um, in, in my mind, at least, I believe it compromises the, the separation and balance and powers within our city's governing document. And so, Madam President, it's my strong recommendation that it not advance to a regular meeting and would, I'd urge my other colleagues to consider the same. So I reserve the ability of asking follow-up questions, but I yield the floor. I thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Do we have any additional questions or comments from the council? Uh, Councilmember Mills, please proceed.
Yes. Yeah, I was just, um, I was in the, I was kind of feeling the same way. Um, I was, I was leaning towards table in this, uh, you know, just to let it, I, I need to think about, you know, like, do, uh, following others, you know, um, I'm just not really interested in, you know, in that, in following, you know, other municipalities when we, when we have a, uh, a strong mayor, uh, city here, whereas though we can, you know, kind of stick to the script as far as where we are today, um, as, as far as where things stand today. And, um, and that, and that, not changing, you know, this aspect. Um, so, so I was more so leaning towards tabling, um, but as, as, as my colleague, Council, Councilmember Simmons, uh, I think, I guess he feels it's maybe the same way, or just not moving forward at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Are there additional questions or comments from the council? I do have my, oh, Councilmember Cole, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. I was looking back through some of the revisions to this. Uh, the clerk's office was originally under the mayor's office until nineteen eighty-eight, when it was last changed and put under the council. Um, I think it's fine how it is. I don't think we need to revise this section of the charter at all. Um, I would echo what my colleague said and, and say that we should just leave this alone. I don't know if we should table that or bring it to a vote and table it at an actual meeting after a public hearing, but I don't think we need to change this section of the charter.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole, for your input. Um, Councilwoman Johnson, do you also have input as well or questions?
Um, just input, um, again, just hearing, um, what everyone's saying, taking a look at it. I guess I can see both sides. My concern is, well, I understand that we are part-time, so it would be best to have the city clerk administered by someone who's full-time and can help full-time. My concern is the, serve at the pleasure of the mayor. I guess it doesn't give us any kind of, um, I guess, support. Like I said, if something were to happen, there's no separation. So that would be some of my concerns. So, um, I think it Um, I think it may, um, require some additional time to, um, look at and put together something that we all could work forward with.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. Um, additionally, I also have input. Uh, first, I'd like to thank the mayor and the administration staff. Um, this originally arose, um, due to some concerns, and so I asked if we could take a look at it, to look through it. Um, with that, were some recommendations from the administration, some administration, I'm sorry, from, some recommendations from myself as well. Um, and some things that I, uh, suggested regarding the changes that were provided, um, is that the city clerk's office remains separate from the city administration office to ensure that we have integrity, neutrality, and transparency of the legislative process. In addition, just wanted to maintain the separation so that we can have accurate record, um, records, uh, for the city council proceedings, supporting legislative functions and executive interference, um, to ensure that we avoid that without having that. Um, also, um, to prevent potential conflicts of interest, making sure that we have checks and balances, and ensuring that the city council's decisions are documented independently. Um, and just to ensure that we uphold the integrity of the local government operations. Additionally, um, also recommended that, um, based on the administration's recommendations, that we bring it back to the council so that it would be, uh, we would still maintain our voting in regards to this position. Um, and just adding an additional language from the original charter, um, that was not included. Um, but in addition to that, I did have questions, one, two questions for the mayor. Um, let me roll back a little bit. I do agree with my colleagues. Um, that either we look at not changing it at all or holding off and discussing it more. Um, just due to some of the things that we may not see eye to eye with right now and that we can understand and, and have additional conversations. Um, but Mayor Sidnor, I do have a question in regards to, just for understanding purposes. Um, can you please confirm if this position, how you're recommending it, that it would also be something that the council would confirm, similar to when there's a new mayor? Um, they would need to be voted in by us or confirmed by us, and also, um, I had another question, but I'll wait, I'll wait for you to answer that one.
Um, yes, Madam, um, President, yes. If, if, if it's pointed, if it goes the way that I read on record, yeah, the new mayor would have to point, um, administration, and the city clerk would follow the administration. But I want to take a step back, but I made, Madam President. Since I'm in the, I feel the room that don't want to change this, and I, uh, I want to make a change recommendation to keep it the same way it is. The city administrator will appoint the, uh, clerk, confirmed by the council. And then it, uh, swear to say, the majority of the council, um, find that language there, and then we scratch it out. But keep it the same way it has it now. I don't have the, the exact language on me right now, reading and trying to find it. But what I would, what I recommend, scratch out that we don't need a deputy city, uh, clerk, deputy city clerk. I recommend we scratch that language out. B, we look at the charter, um, Section three twenty. Um, I recommend we, uh, remove B and proceed with the rest, the original charter as written in, uh, Section A.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor. One additional question that I did have, um, this position as it's written with or without the changes, well, I'm sorry, with the changes. This was, this is for the city council clerk only. They wouldn't be shared with the mayor's office with these adjustments, just to confirm.
Second, Madam President?
Um, with the changes that were proposed, this, this would be a city clerk for the council position. They would not be sharing responsibilities with the mayor's office, or would they, with these recommended changes?
And they would not be shared responsibly with the mayor's office. Uh, there'll still be, it look like, well, uh, I'm a, I just have a question, did I go back? It'd just be a liaison, pretty much. Be a liaison, uh, under the, under the city administrator and signs that, that council clerk will be assigned to, um, the city council office. Will function under the city council office, you know, the duties that they're doing right now. But like I said, that report would be the city administrator for time off, for leave, anything dealing with work-wise, that city clerk will, um, report to the city administrator, but, uh, would not report to the mayor's office at all. Be, it'd still be separate, just be a liaison more so, and just doing the same work. It'd just be a pointed position, but like I said before, I just, I withdraw, uh, Section A and leave it as it, and remove, uh, Section B as the deputy clerk. That'd be, uh, the new language, um, okay, that's okay with you guys. And nothing has changed. Basically, going back to the original way it is, we just removed Section B out of Section three twenty. Section A will stay the same as it is, as you, as you read it, um. Once you, you following me, Madam President?
I am following you. I think we probably have had so many track changes and everyone looking at different versions that I'm not sure if the council would need additional time, if they would like, if they're comfortable moving this forward to the April fourteenth meeting, or would they like to, um, not move forward? I just need confirmation. It sounds like they would not like it to move forward to the April fourteenth meeting.
I, I think, Megan, I suggest, I think, um, what, what I, what I, what I hear from the council, they don't want to change it the way that I used to recommend it. They wanted to keep it the same. They want the, the clerk to fall under the legislation branch and have, the council wants to have some authority over the clerk when it comes to, uh, um, I guess, the, the, the supervision of the clerk. That's why I, I see it. So that's the way we have it right now. Right now, the way it's written right now, that the clerk is appointed by the, uh, city administrator, confirmed by the city council, and serve at the pleasure of the majority of the city council. That's the original language is written right now under Section three twenty.
Right. No, I understand. Um, I want to just make sure I acknowledge Councilmember Mills, and then I'll come back to that, if you don't mind, um.
Yeah, yeah, but take your time, Madam President.
Thank, thank you, Mayor Sidnor. I appreciate it. Uh, Councilmember Mills?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I, um, the, uh, the, the reason why I feel as such is, um, like, would we have, eh, well, it really doesn't make sense for if administration was going to, um, I'm not saying what they're saying doesn't make sense. I'm, what I'm saying is as far as for the council, since we're part-time, you know, and we're talking about a full-time employee. Um, for us to sit in at an interview, because that would be a, 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 a member, a city, a city employee who would specifically be working for the council. So for us to, to, for us to have no input on this particular clerk, you know, um, uh, uh, you know, that's, that's, that's why I feel as though leaving it as is, um, if the, uh, if the, if the administration would have authority or let's say, you know, is given authority as far as the time, um, you know, yes, the administration should have some type of authority over that full-time employee. Um, that's fine, uh, but the, but the clerk, the council clerk should have the council's input into, uh, this, this, this hiring and firing. Um, I don't see, I, I, I see it as a, as a, a majority of the council to, if, if we wanted to have a new city clerk, that instead of just one person making the judgment, when it's, when the title is city clerk, it doesn't make sense for one person to, to have a hire and fire when it's the city's clerk. So sh- that clerk, whoever, male, female, whoever it is, should, at least out of the five council members, should be able to vote that person in and to vote that person out. So to, for me, if, if it's not going to be that way, then I don't want to move forward with this at all.
And that's the way it's originally written right now, um, Councilman Mills. That's why I said, I, we, we keep it in Section three twenty, where Section three twenty is read that the city clerk is appointed by the city administrator, confirmed by the city council, and serve at the pleasure of the majority of the, uh, city council. So we were just trying to, uh, change this, because we had, you know, situation, we were trying to rectify, but once again, you guys have the final decision, and, um, um, I'm fine, administration, I would find whichever way. We prefer our way, but if that's not the way you guys want to proceed, then you have the authority to, uh, proceed the way that, for the majority of your vote, so we'll stand by whatever you guys decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor. Thank you, Councilmember Mills, for your input. Is there any additional input or questions? I don't want to skip over anyone. Uh, Councilwoman Johnson, please feel free, free to proceed.
And forgive me, this may be mundane or semantics, but it does, one of the changes is the title, like clerk to the city council as opposed to city clerk. I don't know if that makes a difference, or just if there's a reason why that was, um, a suggestion, suggested change.
I don't know if you think it makes a, a di- a big difference.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. Any additional questions or comments? I don't see any. Um, just going off of what Councilmember Simmons initially stated, um, and I don't see that it has changed, that he did not want to proceed forward. Councilmember Cole stated that he would like to see that there were no changes be made and that it's kept, it's kept the same. Councilwoman Johnson, I'm not sure if you said that. I'm, I'm trying to think, listen to everyone's input. Um, I know Councilmember Mills does not want to move forward, and then I also have hesitation in moving forward as well, so I respectfully, Mayor Sidnor, I think, right now, what we'll do is hold off and not add this to the, the April fourteenth meeting. And perhaps we can revisit it and try to discuss it a little bit more. Does, uh, does that work?
Um, that's fine with me, Madam President. Like I said, you guys have the final authority, so I respect whatever decision you guys chose, excuse me. Thank you.
Thank, thank you so much for your time, Mayor Sidnor. Thank you, everyone, for your input. Um, we will not proceed forward with the agenda item number six to the April fourteenth meeting. Um, and with no further business to come before the mayor and city council, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and have a wonderful night.